Welcome to the work session. It's 5:00 P.M. Gina?
To clarify, this is a monthly work session of the mayor and council. This is a meeting that is held each month to allow the members to discuss specific items in preparation for the regular council meeting, which is held the second Tuesday of each month. The dialogue of this meeting will be between the mayor, council, and staff members only. The time for citizens' input involves will come at a regular meeting to be held next Tuesday during citizens' input proportion of the meeting. We respectfully ask that you hold your comments or any questions until that time unless called upon. Once the meeting is adjourned, we ask that everyone exit the meeting room and the property in timely manner. Thank you.
Now, were you going to rearrange the agenda?
Yes. Okay, so we are going to go straight to item six, consider a reimbursement resolution prepared by the city financial consultant, Mr. John Warner of Cumberland Securities with Allen Owens.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Again, I'm Allen Owens, the treasurer for the city. And item for discussion this evening for proposal for next week is a proposed reimbursement resolution in connection with a proposed Series 2025 capital outlay improvement note. I did hand out some slides for everybody to take a look at as we go through it. I would like to mention also that we have Mr. John Warner here from Cumberland Securities. He will be acting as our financial consultant on this proposed financing, and he will be available to answer any questions that council may have later on. Begin with a quick overview of the process. Again, Mr. Warner with Cumberland Securities will start the RFP process and have bond council draft the necessary resolutions. He would then present the resolution to council at our September council meeting. Then he would open the bids, award the note, subject to approval by the council, by the comptroller. He would send the resolution, RFP results, and the amortization schedule to the comptroller for their approval. Then after that approval, that's when we can actually close on the debt and fund. From the date of the council's meeting, assuming we don't try to rush anything, usually it would take about 60 to 75 days. The cost of issuance would be funded with proceeds from the note. Therefore, he's recommending a not-to-exceed amount of about $1,550,000. Again, that doesn't mean, actually, the latest estimate of cost of issuance is about under $20,000, about $17,500, but this would give us a little bit of a cushion. The idea is that you want to have, the whole idea was to have $1,500,000 net deposited into a construction fund. So that's why that number says $1,550,000 as the total not-to-exceed amount of the note. The next slide is regards to the specific item before you, the reimbursement resolution, some of the highlights. Some of the projects currently in progress are in progress, and we may be incurring expenses on those projects prior to closing on the note. So this resolution would allow us to reimburse the general fund for any expenses incurred on any of these projects that are currently in process. The resolution for the note would not mention projects specifically by name or amount. This would give us as much flexibility as possible so that we have more opportunities to allocate funds based upon the need and the timing of the development of the projects. On the next slide, we have some potential projects that could be funded with this 2025 capital note. Again, these are just some specific items that I pulled from the currently adopted 2026 budget. We have the Third Avenue Drainage Project, $485,000, dehumidification system for $455,000, road resurfacing, $300,000, and taxiway apron rehabilitation, $333,000. Those projects total $1,574,000. Again, if the note, if we net $1,500,000, that means there would be about $74,000 that would be paid out of fund balance. Again, if we decide to set the note at $1,550,000, closing costs after that, we would probably net a little bit more than the 1.5 million. There are two items that are footnoted, and they're currently, those are the dehumidification system and the taxiway apron rehabilitation. Those are currently in process. Both of those items, you recall, in discussions in prior years, were identified to be paid with ARPA funds. If you remember, at the end of last year, we did a resolution, any balance of unspent money in ARPA, we decided to allocate as to meet the spending requirements as far as dates with the federal government. We decided to allocate any unspent money to previously paid medical or and/or group insurance or professional services. So the effect of that, basically what that did is that put that money in our, the city's fund balance. So our fund balance is higher than it would have been, our unassigned fund balance. So I guess you people, you might ask, well, why do we, why are we recommending borrowing this money then? Well, the whole idea of borrowing this, this note was to try to protect as much as we can of our unassigned fund balance. If you recall, in the current year budget, when you look at future years, you know, our fund balance, even assuming that we did take out a note, is projected to decline quite a bit. So, you know, the whole idea of this borrowing is to try to mitigate the effects on our unassigned fund balance and try to leverage our position to try to strike the best balance as poss, that we can possible between tax increases, which nobody wants to do, borrowing, and use of fund balance. So that's, that was our plan. We're not, these are not by any means the projects that would be funded. Basically, it would be, you know, as projects are developed and they meet the criteria, which have a useful life of not, less than 12 years, then we would think they would be good candidates to be funded with the proceeds from the bond. So that's just to give you an idea, some of the projects that could be reimbursed from the bond. And like I mentioned, Mr. Warner is here. If you have any specific questions, or I could try to answer, we're both available. So turn it back for any questions from council.
What is the projected interest rate?
Mayor, my name's John Warner. I'm with Cumberland Securities. That's an excellent question. We are anticipating, because of the performance of the city over the last, you know, couple of audit periods, we expect the rates could be somewhere around 4 percent, and that would be a fixed rate, doesn't, will never change after the day of the close. But as Allen alluded, we won't know until after we get all of our bids in and that sort of thing as well. But that's what we're thinking.
And what's, how many years is?
12 years.
Why did you choose such a long period of time?
Capital outlay notes, that's the maximum distance. If you want to do it in 10 years, we could do that as well.
So what if, what's that going to take each year out of property tax to pay?
I'll have to look and see what that, what that is. Do you want 10 years or do you want 12 years, sir?
Well, either one.
And the other thing is too, is we can set this up. Hang on just one minute here.
I think I'd, the project, initial projection debt service over 12 years is about $170,000 a year.
Yeah, $160,000 to $170,000 dollars a year.
So that's, based on our current property valuation, that's like a four cent, a four penny.
Four cents?
It's about four pennies. Yes, sir.
And what is it on 10? So a difference of what?
$15,000 a year.
That's just me. I prefer a shorter. I don't like debt anyway, but.
Mayor, may I suggest, may I suggest that we set it up for a 12-year amortization, but with the city to be able to pay it off in full anytime after five years or something like that. That way, you'll have flexibility, depending on what your financial situation might be out into the future.
The other.
You have that option.
This is for Allen. So if the drainage problem down on Third Avenue blows up on us, we, we'll just have to take that out of fund balance?
When you say, you mean as far as cost increasing then?
Yes.
Well, I mean, that's a good question. We could take, we could, you know, prioritize the bond and devote whatever the cost is and then fund whatever is remaining towards the projects. Or we could take the additional cost out of fund balance and then have more money in the bond. So it would just be a, I guess, but at the end of the day, the plan is to have debt of the 1.5 million. So, and anything above that would be coming out of fund balance.
Well, that, an estimate scares me in this day and time, and the $485,000.
Yeah, that's been.
The way things are going.
An estimate for at least a year that I know of, probably close to a year.
Mayor, Allen is correct that we don't put a dollar amount or allocate for any particular type of project. We just have the dollar amount in total. And if you look at the second paragraph in this resolution, those are the described projects. So however you want to spend them all, you can spend them all on one project if you wanted to. But these are the, these are the anticipated projects based on the CIP that the city's already has approved.
So, Mayor, are you?
Yes.
So if we could set it up where we could pay it off in five years, would that be with no penalty?
No, without any penalty. That's, that's how we would do the RFP.
Right.
And then if the results come back and they say, well, there may be some penalty, we can negotiate that out.
Okay.
But we will put that in their five-year call, pay back, pay back anytime, you know, whenever you want to after that, at no penalty. Yes, sir.
Now, is this going out to only the banks, or is this actually going to be a bond, or?
No, this will be a capital outlay note, as described in Tennessee Code Annotated. And we will probably send these bids out. The last time we did something, a few years back for the city, I think we sent them out to about 30 different banks, local banks, regional banks, super-regional banks, and to see who had an interest in something like that. And then once we accumulated all the bids back, we'll give them like two and a half, three weeks to respond to the RFP itself. Then we'll spread that out. I'll call Allen. We'll talk about, here's what these look like. And then from there, we can decide who we're going to award that. Then we'll come back to the meeting in September with the resolution, the bid results, which will spread with everybody to see, and then we will award that. And with that, an executed note, the bond results, and the proposed amortization schedule goes to the comptroller, and the comptroller then gives a yea or nay. So all this is contingent on the comptroller approving us to be able to do that. And once that's done, then we can award the bonds formally and go ahead and start moving towards a formal closing.
Yeah. Last question, as far as fees. I think we're, you're recommending, and Allen, $1,500,050. So what typically is Cumberland Securities' fee?
Our fee.
Not necessarily a dollar amount, a percentage amount?
Yeah, well, I, no, I was about to say, right now, we have in there about $20,000 worth of fees between, and it could be a little bit less, but between us, bond council. But we're also thinking that there might be the, it's not atypical for a bank to have their council review bond council's paperwork, okay, to make sure that the bank's interests are protected.
Right.
So there may be a small, a bit of, amount of money in that as well. So if I did, you know, if I'm, again, if I'm guessing, on the very top end, $25,000.
So we're, we're saying that we could be paying expenses for the bank to pay their bond council, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's, and that's, the good news is, as opposed, you asked earlier about doing a bond, since it's not rated, you don't go through the rating process, there's not a paying agent involved in this at all, we don't prepare a professional OS.
Right.
As we would if it was a negotiable security.
Right.
So there's a lot of, there's several thousands of dollars that you're not going to have to worry about paying as far as your overall cost of issuance. And more importantly, you also don't have an underwriter's discount.
Right.
Which is also a cost outside the cost of issuance.
Right.
But still a cost that the city has to bear when they sell bonds.
Right, right. Okay, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions? So Allen, what's the next step you're going, for Tuesday? What's, what are you, what are you going to have on the agenda?
The next step is just the reimbursement resolution for council's consideration to, whether to approve that or not.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Warner.
You're very welcome, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And thank you, Council and Mayor, for reordering the agenda, because Mr. Warner does have quite a lengthy drive, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have safe travels.
Next.
Item one, consider renaming W.P. Johnson Park, Park's located at Jones Circle, to Willie J. Mitchell Park, Councilman Robertson.
This is something that kind of community has wanted, been, wanted it to do for a while. A former city council member made a suggestion and put it in a resolution for the Jones Park to be named Willie Payne Johnson. That went over, they approved it, but it wasn't a really good idea because Mr. Willie Payne Johnson is a minister at Greater First Baptist Church, he was, and he really didn't have anything to do with Jones Park. Not sure why they decided to ask him to name it that, but they did approve it. But to make it right, I would like to make it right. Mr. Willie J. Mitchell spent hours and hours at that park. He was instrumental in keeping the park up. He, he worked on dragging the field. He, he trained, coached kids, no, no telling how many kids he did. I was one of the kids. And he spent money out of his pocket to buy gloves and shoes and uniforms and all kids in the back of his truck, back and forth to games in Spring Hill Plasket. So I would like to see his name put on that park to make it, make it the way it should be. Kind of getting, I guess, getting in both resolutions. The second resolution is coming up with also honor Mr. Willie Payne Johnson. He was instrumental in the community. He ministered at Greater First Baptist Church for over 40 years and something, we'd like to recognize him by naming, am I okay going, going ahead on to the second?
Just.
Okay, let me stay off the second and stay on the first.
Okay.
But I would like to see that, that feel. I don't, I've talked to the guy that would be responsible for changing the sign. I was supposed to have a quote in hand by tonight, but I didn't, I hadn't got it yet what it would cost. Right now, I don't, don't really know what it would cost. I don't know exactly how it would be paid for to do it, but if it had to come out of my, my money that I'm allowed each year to do it, I don't mind paying for it. If it had to come out of pocket, I don't mind paying for it. So I'd like to see us approve that.
Item number one, that, I mean, yeah, you're, it was a passion for Willie J., and well deserved. So without objection, that'll be on the agenda for Tuesday.
I want to ask a couple of questions, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, Ronald, are you saying, I guess, first thing, has the Johnson family been notified and they don't have a problem with it?
Yes, yes, they have. Herbert, the minister at Greater First Baptist now, Mr. Willie Payne's son, Herbert, we talked about it, and they.
They okay with it?
He's okay with it, cause, I mean, he, he really didn't understand why the, why the name was put on there either. But we have talked about it.
And then would it be Willie J. Mitchell Park? Will it still be called like Jones Field at Willie J. Mitchell Park, or?
Well, it'd be Willie J. Mitchell, whatever it is now, Park, Field, I'm not sure what, I guess, even, no, I'm somewhere else. I'm somewhere else.
Mainly getting his name on that big sign down there.
Yeah, but I mean, just for people knowing it, how to get there, would, would we still include it as Jones Field in any of his name or not?
That's the funny thing, but I think the park is actually.
It's always going to be Jones Park, man. You're not going to raise.
The sign says George W. Turner Park, but it's always been known as Jones Park.
Well, I know one thing, Willie J. Mitchell had me and Bill Haywood, he used to be our baseball coach, running and sweating and had us laying brick in the summertime. So I'm, I'm all for it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Like I say, anymore, like I say, I, I'll get a, get a quote on that, like I say, ever, ever had needs to be paid, like I say, if it's, if you gotta, if I have to, like it could come out of my discretionary money, either mine or out of my pocket, either way, I like to say no.
It shouldn't be too expensive, Ronald.
Yeah.
Further, further discussion? Without objection, it'll be on the agenda for Tuesday. Next is.
Item two, consider signage W.P. Johnson Way, which dedicates a proportion of Hill Street approaching Greater First Baptist Church in honor of Reverend W.P. Johnson, Councilman Robertson.
Okay, now I'll talk about that. Like I say, Reverend Johnson was a minister for over 40 years. His son is now taking, taking over, and of course, they built a new church there. And the road right in front of the church is Hill Street. We would like, I would like to see that named W.P. Johnson Way. It wouldn't interfere with Hill Street, it'd still be Hill Street, but it'd just be also called W.P. Johnson Way. There's only one house on that street, so like I say, we're not going to change the street name, so it won't affect that. But I think all involved in that would be putting up a couple of signs and getting it approved.
Questions?
Uh, one other thing, on the map that was put in the, in here, it says from, from McDowell Street to, to Sixth Avenue. I'd like to, I guess maybe, maybe need to try to amend that. I'd like to see it come from, from Fifth Avenue to Sixth Avenue. So it would, it would contain a complete street instead of going halfway up.
No, it's supposed to be one right after you turn off Fifth Avenue, past the stop sign, and then when you're leaving, right there at that stop sign where it cuts across to Sixth Avenue, another one right there. It's supposed to be two.
But there's, there's two dots.
Pass, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's drawn up going from McDowell Lane to Sixth Avenue. I want, wanted it to come from Fifth Avenue to Sixth Avenue.
Yeah.
That whole street.
And there's a dot right there.
There's two dots.
See the dot? Yeah, right there. Down, come down, down, right there.
Yeah, but he's just wanting the red to be extended to Fifth Avenue.
Yeah, he just wants the red.
The red to be extended. The red extended to the whole street.
Yeah, because those dots should be the signs.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's two signs.
So the red just needs to be extended.
Yeah, the red.
Yeah, it's just a line and not extended. But the dots represented. I probably should have put them in red, but.
But it's not going to change any ad, maiden addresses for the residents?
No, it's just way, kind of like we did for Caldwell Biggers on Fifth Avenue.
Yes.
And Dante Hart.
Yeah. Jason Maxwell, Monica Gabriel.
Further questions? Without objection, that'll be on the agenda for Tuesday. Next.
Item three, consider, consider owner request for rezoning property located at unaddressed O'Farmington Road, map 057, parcel 094.00, within the corporate city limits of the city of Lisburg. From C2 intermediate business to R2 medium residential, planning commission gave favorable recommendation, a vote from, of five to zero. And Chris?
Yes. Basically, what's getting rezoned here is 6.09 acres, and we received a concept plan about it, and they wanted to put some duplexes in for that property. So far, the concept plan is for basically eight units, but that could change because of our regulations. This is just a general concept of it. It could be less than eight units. Does anybody have any kind of questions?
But it's in a business area? There's so many businesses?
The existing land use is, to the south of it is housing, is just classified currently as zoning for C2. C2 used to allow for residential, that's no longer the case, but this existing land use of it is residential surrounding the property.
Yeah, most of that stuff out there is houses. Okay.
We've had a couple of responses from neighbors there that didn't want it resolved, right?
Yes, we did have some neighbors come to our planning commission, and during our comments phase, they did speak against the rezoning application, but our planning commission members felt that their concerns is going to be addressed during the site plans, because I believe the neighbors were concerned about the, it being a flood area, but our regulations does cover that. So, but I think our planning commission members felt confident with it being moved forward for the rezoning.
But, but we don't know, when I was at that meeting, we don't know if it can be raised enough to get out of the flood plain, floodway, or.
Correct.
Whatever recorded in the city vision here, right?
Correct. Right now, I mean, it's just a concept plan, you know, it still has to go through, it looks like it's going to be a major site plan, so they have to basically do water quality as well. So right now, while we're saying, hey, they have a proposal for eight units, it could be less than that, it could only be four or six. We don't know until we get into it and have more of a site plan submitted to us.
But do we need to rezonate until all that's worked out?
So he didn't want to spend the money to have an engineer work that all that out if we weren't going to rezonate.
We're going to rezonate.
Well, you can't build, you can't build in the floodway. You can build in the flood zone, there's a difference there. And there's also additional requirement of balancing the cut and fill. Chris, talk to us about that a moment.
Basically, you know, I have to get my stormwater coordinator just to present that, but he ain't here, but I can provide the information later on to the city council members about that if you want.
The basic thing that I understood was that you have to, if you're going to fill, you have to excavate elsewhere on the property to balance that out.
Correct.
Is that, Vicki, is that what you remember?
Yes, sir.
So it may not work out.
Yeah.
Period.
And that's where I got a little problem. I know commercial, it could still flood, but less people, but I, I've got a little problem with knowingly, you know, doing it until we know, and I understand he doesn't see, you know, we want to spend the money, but I'd hate to prove it for several families and then they get caught up in floods.
Well, this is just proving the rezoning, it's not proving the building itself.
But it's proven, but, but we, it's proving to rezonate residences.
It just gives him opportunity.
It doesn't approve any building at all.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
But that's what, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. It just gives him opportunity to basically develop the property. I mean, he would have to go through the same process if he wants to put a gas station there. You know, he still has to meet the regulations and everything like that.
Further questions? Okay, that'll be on the agenda. Next.
Item four.
Thank you, Chris.
Consider requests by the Marshall County Highway Department to annex one mile of Findley Beach Road, described as from the west starting point to CSM Allen V. Worthing Memorial Bridge, going east one mile to the end of 1404 Robin Hood Road, map 072, parcel 00.00, I mean, 001.00, into the corporate limit to the city of Lisburg. The planning commission gave an unfavorable recommendation by five to zero. Chris Rush?
Yes, what our planning commission did, they received a legal opinion from Mr. Hutto, because they had some legal questions surrounding the, basically, road, and Mr. Hutto gave the legal opinion of the permits that be issued by the county. If the developer meets all the criteria for the permit, then the county should issue them the permit. So we had some legal questions surrounding that, we did have a discussion at the planning commission, and our planning commission members felt at this time that is not appropriate to annex the road.
Is there, Chris, is there a turning lane? It seemed like something's been paved up there. Is that a turning lane, or what is that that's been?
Is, basically, is related to the traffic study. I'm. Is, uh, basically is related to the traffic study, uh, I think you're referring to Robin Hood Road, is, are you referring to that?
No, I'm referring to Finley Beach.
It's the new, it's the new turn lane you put there?
Oh, on Spring Valley Estates, you're talking about that, yes, there is a turning lane being built for Spring Valley Estates. Um, I believe, um, that was a holdup, I believe they, uh, close to being completed of that, on the turning lanes.
But that's what we're talking about, Finley Beach Road, right?
Yes, correct, uh, I'm sorry, I just now got done with the Baymore, uh, traffic study there, and it was about a turning lane on Robin Hood Road as well.
Okay, no, no, but, but they are, but the county gave them a permit?
Yes, for Finley Beach Road, yes.
The county gave them a permit for the turning lane?
Well, that is basically, uh, yes, they did give it the, uh, a permit, a right-of-way permit, the county did, for the, uh, Spring Valley Estates.
Further questions? Remember, we're doing a study of how many miles of road that we're taking in with all of these new subdivisions and along with water lines and storm sewers and sidewalks, so that's not been completed either. So, uh, that'll be on the agenda for Tuesday unless there's further questions. Next.
Item five, consider requests by the Marshall County Highway Department to annex one mile of Robin Hood Road described as from the north starting point of intersection of Finley Beach Road and Robin Hood Road going south one mile to the end of fourteen eighty Fayetteville Highway, map zero sixty-four, parcel zero three eight point zero zero, into the corporate city limits of the city of Lewisburg. The Planning Commission gave an unfavorable recommendation five to zero. Chris?
Yes, uh, what Gina was saying, they gave an unfavorable recommendation, and basically at this time, they felt like the annexation of the road is not an issue right now.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Chris. Next.
Okay, we've done number item six, so we're going to item seven. Consider sale of Fire Squad One, it's a two thousand and sixteen Chevrolet Silverata thirty-five hundred H.D., four-by-four truck, reserve bid of fifteen thousand through gov.govdeals, online auction website. Drew?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilor. This is me requesting the sale of the old squad truck, our new one's in service and running good, uh, the other one's just sitting out back, I wanted to hold on to it until we got to this point. I recommended the fifteen thousand dollar reserve, the blue book on it is about twenty-four thousand, uh, so I went a little down on that because of the type of miles that are on it, and there's some holes drilled in the body, and it, it needs a little bit of work, but I feel that fifteen thousand reserve is, is a nice place to start, but it's just rec, just requesting to, to liquidate it.
Questions for the chief?
Would that be through Gov Deal, Gov Deal?
Yes, it would be through Gov Deals.
Further questions?
Mr. Hutto, it's definitely a road call, right, 'cause I know we, uh, we did a resolution, just making sure. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Item eight, report from city recorder Gina Jones on hours it takes to become a certified city recorder with hours already taken and projected completion date. So, I began my journey on, uh, city recorder, uh, as of late September twenty-three, I think it was twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-three. When I accepted the position, I also made an agreement to cross-train, uh, the person that was taking my place in finance and payroll and benefits. Um, also, at that same time, I was, uh, training with Pam Davis, also, to learn that position. So pretty much the first four and a half, five months, I was training, uh, just constantly training. Now, some of these certificates that you see on front are previous, she told me to go ahead and put those in there, the state lady did, uh, that they would consider them, but originally, I probably got started March of twenty-four, and from March of twenty-four until, um, the end of April twenty twenty-five, I have completed, um, a hundred-plus hours. Um, I do have a conference coming up in September, I thought, well, I'm gonna hold that certification, I mean, uh, application, and go ahead and do the Tam card conference, but I chose to go ahead and submit to the state, and they do have my application, and they are reviewing it right now. I wish I could tell you, um, how long it takes, but that's kinda unknown, because it goes to the state office, and they're reviewing municipal clerks, city recorders, um, and I'm not sure if they do certification on, uh, the other TGOFA, I'm not sure about that, but anyway, it is submitted to the state, and that is all of my education, all the certifications. And it's kind of gave a brief of what it takes to become a city recorder.
You got a hundred and four hours, and how many do you need to come certify?
I, it just takes a hundred, and, and I've got a hundred and eight point five right now.
So what you're lacking to come certify?
I don't, I'm waiting on the state to say it's okay, and give me my, and give my certificate.
I got you, I got you, got you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if, if she finds some of the certifications that don't qualify, because that's kind of been a question with all the recorders, they will report back to me, and then my September should take care of that, because that's gonna be sixteen credits right there.
Gina, we appreciate what you do.
What, uh, I've got a question, why, I mean, why was this requested?
Why, why was that requested?
Mm-hmm.
I requested the same thing I do on every employee's training, I'm big on employee training, I'm big on, uh, having our workforce trained, and, uh.
So you've asked, you've asked other employees for the same information?
I, I asked, well, yeah, yeah, I've asked somebody else, and Mr. Owens there, he agreed to become a certified municipal finance officer. He gave us a report on his training, he accomplished those goals, so, yeah.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see any reason would it be put in a resolution, that's, that's about training, unless you.
It's not in, it's not in a resolution, I just asked for an update.
Yeah.
Further questions? Is Debbie here?
Yes, she's there, she got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All righty, we got item nine, update on traffic study provided by M-TAS Brad Peters, uh, public works consultant, Bam is going to present that.
Yeah, a couple of months ago, we had Mr. Peters, M-TAS consultant, come down to, uh, evaluate four intersections here in the city of Lewisburg. Uh, you remember, one of them was, uh, Eighth Avenue and Cedar Street to determine if the intersection should be converted to a four-way stop, um, Ashwood Avenue and Hull Avenue and Taylor Street to determine if the intersection should be converted to a four-way stop, Third Avenue to determine if multiple four-way stop intersections are necessary, and Second Avenue and College Street to determine if signalized intersections are necessary. And we agreed that on the first two, he was going to wait until school started back, because the traffic council would pick up, there'd be more traffic there. School has started back, but it'll probably be end of August, September, before he gets down to evaluate that. The other two, he did evaluate, Third Avenue to determine if multiple four-way stop intersections are necessary. If you will, I'll bear you from reading all of that stuff, if you'll go to page ten, and you'll see his results on that one, or his recommendation. Concerning Third Avenue, he said, "For the three intersections along Third Avenue, available crash data and traffic counts do not support the need for always stop controls. However, the presence of significant site distance limitation remains a safety concern. As such, although the city has the authority to remove the stop controls, M-TAS recommends retaining the current always stop configuration." And he highlighted that the city has control to change that, but his recommendation, recommendation, based on safety concern. And for, uh, Second Avenue and College Street, if you'll go to page fourteen, and it reads, "As with all waste stop control, the decision to install or maintain a traffic signal ultimately rests with the city and should be guided by sound engineering judgment. In this case, while the intersection does not meet the M U T C D's traffic volume warrant, which means a manual on uniform traffic control devices, and has a minimal crash history, the limited site distance presents a notable safety concern. Therefore, we recommend that the existing traffic signals remain in place."
That's Second Avenue, right?
Mm-hmm, down at Martin Motors, College Street and all of that, both his concerns were safety-related. But again, that was M-TAS recommendation, so.
Do they got them stoplights where, where like if, if a car's coming and everybody don't, what's the name of them? I mean, can, is it something that we could use?
We, we looked, we looked at that intersection, and it's old, and I think if we were to upgrade it to modern standard, it's gonna cost us a lot more than what we're willing to pay.
Which, which one is that, now, what are you?
College Street, Martin.
Oh, by Martin Motors?
Martin Motors.
Coming down from, uh, Partisan School to Martin Motors?
Lewisburg Electric got a bid for that, to make traffic actuated.
Right.
For something like ten or eleven thousand dollars, and it was turned down. We could revisit it that way. That's, that's minimal cost, I think, but that was, that's what stunned me when it was turned down. And I think it was ten thousand dollars then.
That's twenty-five now, probably.
So how many, I have to count, I know there are figures here, how many stop signs are along that Third Avenue?
About four?
Four, five?
I think it's, it's at least four. It's at least four.
I can't see a site distance, but.
I was gonna say, at least, I think everybody has one.
It's least, I mean, like you said, it's, that was just their recommendation, it's up to whatever the city wants to do.
Well, they're, they're not gonna have to get rid of it, I can tell you.
His, his thing was because of traffic parking on both sides of it. So.
Well, East Church Street, you know, where the dentist office is, and there's no site problems there that I've noticed. And then they torn down, uh.
That house that sits there?
Been a, obstruction, or meant a site restriction.
Power lies in our hands, and he, he highlighted, this was just his recommendation.
I don't know, I mean, it's a lot of stop signs, I'm used to stopping there now, I couldn't do it.
You stopped? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I don't know, if, if you remove stop signs, it'll allow a speeding problem? I mean.
You see how fast they're coming, right? I don't know, I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's no sure fix to it.
Then you put a speed bug there, huh?
Take a different route, I guess.
What about item one and two, are we, now that school's started, are we gonna get him on those?
Like I said, he'll probably be end of August, September, when the flow gets going good, whenever he gets freed up. He knows, he knows to come back, that was part of it, but he wanted to.
Yeah, we have a bigger issue with M E S, is traffic backing up all the way to the Donut Shop.
Yeah, I ain't thinking about that, it's, it's literally at the Donuts.
It was at the Donut Shop Wednesday when I went to cross coun, I mean, Monday, when I went to cross-country practice.
It might clear out some, but it's still, it's still, it's still.
It's to the Donut Shop.
It's, it's.
Yeah, but how you, how do you, how do you stop that?
I know.
I don't know. Might have to get, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't know why they can't park in the church and go through the park, you know, but it doesn't matter.
Well, years ago, that was planned to be five-lane through there, and it got cut off at West Ellington, at least you'd have a, if that.
That one lane that could turn?
That's, that's an opportunity gone past.
Man, it'd turn into two lanes down there.
It does, it turns into two lanes right there at the.
I'm talking about like, coming up something like, like the, the other lane is just to get by, it ain't, it ain't stopping, it's, it's one lane that's stopped outside the road, and the other one, just, where you can just drive by.
Using the turn lane?
Instead of just driving by, you know what I'm saying, maybe just.
You mean they're using the turn lane?
Yeah, they, they in the turning lane, but you can still get through there if you're other car, but, I mean, I don't.
Talking about that area, Debbie, do the council want to know the latest on our traffic signal and striping? Yeah, give us a brief.
So we had our pre-construction meeting yesterday, uh, which Stand So Electric was here, they're the ones that will be doing the striping and installing the signal, they're on the clock as of today, so, um, the striping will start around the second week of September, that'll go fairly quickly, um, the signal, they've already started ordering materials for all of these things, but the signal boots on the ground, they say February first of March, that's when the installation will start. Uh, they said they possibly have a turn-on date of May one, twenty twenty-six, so that's when the signal will be operational. We currently have a completion date no later than June first of twenty twenty-six, but they can always file for an extension if something happens in there, but it's moving forward, so, um, May next year, y'all get to stop at that signal.
You all know too, if you don't already know, that, uh, part of those streets that are being striped with thermoplastic are gonna have raised reflective markers on all of them that, uh, are striped, which will be a big help when it's raining and dark and, uh, which is, I think that's gonna be a great blessing.
And the sign project also is moving forward, just, she gave me an update just this past week, um, they're in the environmental stage right now, but, uh, JMT, they're gonna, they're gonna move it quick, they are right on schedule, so hopefully, that will probably, might happen before, I don't know. Might have it all at the same time, hopefully.
Thank you, Debbie, any questions? Oh, was there something else, Gina?
Yes, item ten, other business, Debbie's gonna present something to add to the agenda for next week, if possible.
Um, I need a resolution to make application for the Public Entity Partners Safety Grant, we do this every year. It is a, um, four thousand dollar grant, we get reimbursed two thousand, we spend four, we get two thousand back, and it's the same grant we use to buy safety boots, uh, check our fire extinguishers, anything safety-related, uh, we have more than enough to recover that money, so I just have to have a resolution to present to, uh, Public Entity Partners.
Questions? Without objection, that'll be on Tuesday's agenda.
Any other?
Any other? Any other? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn it?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Thomas makes the motion. Second?
I'll second.
Councilman Robertson seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.